All right, good afternoon, everyone. Jonathan Lansman, I'm the chair for the Finance Committee, and welcome you guys to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. I believe we have a quorum, I'm taking a visual cue, but we need to do a... we have six, right? One, two, three, four, five.
You're Finance Committee?
No, but we can... do we need to do a roll call for...
Each committee.
Each committee. Great, so we won't have enough for any votes or recommendations, but we can still move ahead with the business, correct? We have Adam.
So you're going to finance?
Yeah, and that's...
Oh, good.
Yeah.
No, but maybe by the time we get to the policy tasks, if there's anything they need to vote on, they'll have enough, but we should be able to start the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So, I'll bring us to order. And if we could do an overall roll call, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Here.
President?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
But he's on neither committee, but he's on both committees. Right, so we do have a quorum for Finance. We don't yet have a quorum for Policy, but we'll move ahead with... next item on the agenda would be Public Comment. If there's anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? There are none. Is there anyone remote?
If you are online and wish to speak for Public Comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Okay, not seeing anyone, but please let the record show that Dr. Hans is now joined. So that's one more on the Policy, correct? Do you know there's a game tonight? Thank you. All right, so there's a second opportunity for Public Comment later on in this meeting. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved, it's been supported. Is there any discussion? Now, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is our Finance Committee meeting, portion of the Committee of the Whole. First item up is our Budget Amendment. CFO and our Deputy CFO, if you guys would like to come up, introduce yourselves, and question on Amendment One and contract obligations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Patrick Franklin, Deputy CFO.
Cheryl Johnson, CFO.
We're presenting the Budget Amendment, FY24 BA1 Draft. A Budget Amendment shows, first of all, it starts with the initial FY24 budget. First of all, is the revenue, Medicaid rate was increased from our economic entity factor from the previous board presentation that we presented to you previously. So we did receive an increase from that entity factor, which caused our revenues to go up about fourteen million dollars. If you look at FY24 BA1 changes, it shows the fund sources within the revenue, where they... how it was allocated, and how it was split. Healthy Michigan, Medicaid specialty, and then we had a slight reduction in Medicaid waiver. So our revenues went from four hundred fifty-five million to four hundred and seventy million with the entity factor rate. The state general fund amount remained the same. We did also have a reduction in our revenue for grants, and that was due to the SAMSA grant for the Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit. We were originally at receipt of SAMSA grant. They denied our no-cost extension, which we were counting, which we added to our revenue, so we deducted that from our revenue for FY24 as a result of SAMSA's decision not to extend the no-cost extension. For expenses, we're looking to increase the ABA provider's expense by six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Part of that was due to the eighty-five cent increase that was mandated, also the eleven cent admin that was mandated. If you look at the Crisis Acute Care Services, it shows an increase of one point eight million dollars, but actually that's just an offset from the grants, because we... that expense was originally applied to our grants, but since we didn't get the no-cost extension, we had to cost shift that amount to offset the funding from SAMSA. Vocational, non-vocational, you see a four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase, and that had to do with the eleven cent increase that was mandated from the state for admin. The biggest increases was through the residential CLS services. The initial budget did not include the provider withhold, neither did it include the enhanced rate, which we received from some of our providers. For FY24, it was not included in the initial budget, and so we increased that as well. And as a result, our specialized residential budget amendment has increased. Overall, total expenses, twelve million, and it shows a net change from operations, sixteen point three. To summarize, on the next sheet, it talks about Medicaid portion of our budget. As we cost shift these dollars, ISF, we have a balance or surplus in ISF and a surplus in our Medicaid of ten million, and in our overall surplus for this budget in our other mental health expenses, which is our restricted assets made up of local and general fund of three point one, roughly three million one hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars of unrestricted assets. And then our last category is the PA2 fund balance, which will equate to two million five hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. And that also is our surplus amount for fiscal year twenty-four budget, sixteen point sixty million three hundred and thirty-three dollars and two hundred and thirty dollars. I think I missed SUD portion of the budget. Substance use, we increased by eight hundred thousand. That was a result of the RFP that was issued for fiscal year twenty-three, reflective in the rates for FY24. And so those were the increases by line item, and the totals, and the overall summary sheet explains each category, Medicaid, other mental health funds, and substance use disorder, resulting in sixteen point three million dollar projected surplus. So that was our Budget Amendments for Budget Amendment One.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. On the Finance Committee, are there any questions by any of the Finance Committee members? Harry Ann, what about the rest of the Board? Any questions? Not seeing any. I'm looking for a motion to approve. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, hold on. There is a hand up. Yes, Mel Kaya.
I was wondering about the drawdown. They had said that they were going to work towards eliminating that for local funds. Have you heard any different or any updates?
Drawdown.
The drawdown is that the state does against our money that we get from the county.
I have not heard of any updates on that, but we will follow up and check and see if there's been any changes.
Oh, Doctor. Okay, thank you. Esther. All right, so we have a... we have a motion, we have a second. There's been discussion at this point to support the BA Amendment reporting out. Do we need a roll call vote, or should we just have an all-hands on the committee? Sheila. Okay, thank you. All those in favor on the Finance Committee of supporting this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, guys. We'll see you at the Board meeting next week. All right. Next on the agenda would be the ADP Contract Extension. Linda, you're here to present. Okay, along with Esther.
Good evening. I'm Edna White, the Director of Human Resources here at OCHN. And good evening. My name is Glenda Witherspoon, and I'm the Manager of Human Resources, so nice to meet all of you. I'm presenting to you this evening a request to approve a new proposed contract with ADP. The purpose of the contract is to implement a new integrated human resources information system to include all modules that HR uses daily. These modules will not only include the ADP payroll module, which we have used for several years, but now the system will include a performance and goal management module, document storage, essential time and attendance, advanced scheduling module for the access team in Pontiac to use for keeping track of employees' work schedule, recruitment and talent acquisition, and the retirement management reporting module. I sat on the RFP Committee with a diverse group of representatives across from OCHN. Our committee reviewed a total of four comprehensive proposals. As a result, ADP was the selected payroll organization, because they were able to offer all the requested modules that we needed to implement. One of the main reasons we went with ADP is because we had been in business for decades... excuse me, because they had been in business for decades for both payroll and tax filing. The other companies had less than ten years in these areas. We have years of experience with ADP and their customer service team, and they have accommodated us well in the past. By going with ADP, we will be replacing two standalone applications. The Performance Management Application, which is called SABRA, and the Recruitment Application, which we call JABA. Both applications are currently averaging around eighty-nine thousand annually. If given the approval to move forward with ADP, we expect to save sixty-one thousand ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents in the first year, sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-four cents in each of the following two years, for a total of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred... eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents over the life of the contract. There was a table that I also presented, that may be in your package. And this table, excuse me, if we go... if we continue on with the current contract, the total that we were paid for 2024 is a hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. If we continue for three years with this process, we will expect to pay a total of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. The new ADP proposed contract for three years for 2024, we would pay for the first year eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents, and this includes thirty-three hundred and fifty dollars for a one-time implementation fee for the new modules. For 2025, we will be paying eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. And for 2026, we will pay... we will also be paying eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents for a total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for that three-year contract. So the expected savings for each year under the new proposed contract, as stated earlier, for 2024 would be sixty-one thousand ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. For 2025, sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-four cents. And for 2026, sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Total savings for the three years, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
Is that complete?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. There's a motion, there's a second. Is there discussion on this?
So is this a contract extension, or is this a new contract?
A new contract.
New contract, which is the same provider?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
With... for ADP, yes.
Right, right, right. So then they went through the bid process as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because the reason I'm asking is it refers to release, close, and then cancel. Does that just mean the process was completely over, or am I used to the term canceled with the bid process?
Um, I should state, for the record, that I was not part of the RFP process because I have a conflict with my spouse working for ADP, so I did not participate. I will be participating in the implementation of the approved vendor. But in this particular case, one thing, from what was reported to me, there was a... the fact that the other vendors that we looked at did not have as much experience, it was... the process stayed open, and ADP did submit a bid as well, among others. So that is why it's worded in the way that it is.
Other questions? First from our Finance Committee?
Sure.
Okay. Other ones from our Finance Committee? Esther? I do have a couple of questions myself. So how long will it take to implement the new set of packages?
How long will it take?
To implement and go live with the new...
Oh, to implement this?
Yeah.
We are possibly looking at starting as early as next month, February first, and I'm not sure, but I can find that out, sir. How long is it take to implementation?
Yes.
From what I've seen in some of the records that were presented to me, depending on the module, the length of time that it would take to implement would vary. So there's a Performance Management Module, which I believe was a two-month implementation, and some of the other recruitment modules also was about two months to implement. So we have to get on ADP's schedule as well. But from what was reported to me, they're ready to go as soon as we have approval. So we would expect, you know, certainly with the...
So assuming we give approval at the Board meeting, and assume we can get on their schedule, that's just when it starts, but roughly end-to-end, once it... once we have a start date... This is... it sounds like there's a couple of modules that are two months long. Have you guys seen a preliminary schedule out of these back-to-back modules? Or do they do them concurrently? I'm trying to get a sense, is this going to be six months to get it done, and the goal is then, with luck, to have it done before the start of the next fiscal year or the start of the next calendar year?
Oh, definitely before the start of the next fiscal year. One of the things that advantageous with going with this vendor is we don't have to do a payroll implementation, which are the ones that take a very long time. So we're adding additional modules. They already have our database. So those types of things factor into a more smooth, more efficient...
So we're looking at this transition to this project as being somewhat low-risk, huh?
I would consider it low-risk.
All right. Any other questions by the Finance Committee? If not, questions for, from others?
The question I had was, the amount of the contract was two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and five dollars and sixty cents, and then the total cost is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and I was just wondering where that six thousand comes in.
That was because of the... they were having like a cushion for the number of employees that will probably be coming on by the time we sign the contract. And so we had like one total that we had initially given them, just an estimate of employees, and so it was more like a building cushion.
The billing process is licenses per individual headcount. So in order to make sure that we have enough in case we do increase our headcount, we wanted to account for that.
Thank you.
So to clarify then, that two fifty-five is not to exceed?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Not to exceed.
Thank you. Beth, anything else? Dennis?
I may have figured this one out on my own. So it is the payroll is the substantial portion, and then the modules are the extra? The new modules going in?
Yeah, the new modules.
Okay, all right, yeah, because... okay, all right. I finally... finally figured it out. But thank you for that confirmation.
Any other questions that were in discussion?
This is Kalana, if I may speak.
Sure.
This is legal counsel for OCHN. Just, I know there was a question regarding the implementation timeline. Each module takes about two to three weeks approximately to implement. If, depending on the amount of resources available, there could be a shorter timeline, or those modules may be implemented concurrently, so it's a matter of months, less than a six-month period that was suggested. It all depends on the timing of execution of contract, as well as our existing transition from our other providers as well for those areas that ADP will be providing services for.
Okay. My assumption is installation is not just the software and turning it on, it's also the training, bringing people up to speed. So room, room for the learning curve.
Correct, so I think it's as they go on, they are trained on those processes before they're closed out.
Okay, thank you for providing that additional information.
Sure.
Okay. If there's no other questions, let's see, we have a motion to approve this, the report out of, for this contract, so for the finance committee, are those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, guys. We'll see you at, well, maybe, or maybe not at the board meeting, but we'll bring it to the board for a formal approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is, and Kalana, I know you're on the call, is our PIHP contract, amendment number one. Are you going to present remotely, or is there someone locally doing that for you?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be presenting remotely.
Okay, well, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. This is for the FY24 PIHP agreement, this is amendment number one. This is a no-cost amendment. As you note from your board action form, the changes are more related to administrative oversight requirements, including personnel oversight or management, recovery of costs by the PIHP in terms of the services provided to persons served, and removal of the obligation to develop a SUD Oversight Policy Board, which actually is under statute and governed elsewhere. Also, as part of the update, included the financial reporting requirement schedule and our local funding obligation link, which was also updated, along with our behavioral health capitation certification document that is included with our PIHP agreement.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, there's a motion, there's a second, is there any discussion on this one? From the finance committee? Adam?
No.
Okay, your right was on, that's why I was asking. I do have a question for you. One of the updates in the standard terms and conditions is to remove the obligation for an SUD Oversight Policy Board. Is it, so with that no longer needed, are we planning to get rid of our SUD oversight, or we're going to retain them?
So let me clarify, that, that was erroneously placed into the contract. The creation of the SUD Oversight Policy Board is codified in the mental health code, and the PIHP is not responsible for the development or creation of the SUD Oversight Policy Board is in fact, actually the CMHSP that is responsible for services, and that obligation again is codified in the mental health code. So it shouldn't have been ever put in our PIHP contract. It doesn't change anything for the SUD Policy Oversight Board, but it just removes that from our contract that was erroneously placed in the agreement.
Okay, thank you. So the second thing I noticed is typically with the PIHP contract, there's additional reporting that we have to do, at no cost recovery to ourselves, it's just part of the job of being a PIHP. But there's an amendment here for recovery of service costs, does that mean we'll finally be able to, you're shaking your head, no. I guess we won't be able to recover any administrative costs still, even if we have?
No, this is related to the PIHP's ability to recover service costs in the event that the PIHP provides services through the duration of an appeal, and the services were determined to be not medically necessary, we can rec, we can recover those costs for those services to the extent that we intentionally left those services in place as a result of the appeal.
Thank you for clarifying that. I do appreciate that. Now, are there any questions from the finance committee, or from anyone else on our board? Not seeing anything, all right, for the finance committee, are those in favor of approving this amendment for the PIHP? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you. Again, we'll be taking this up as we report out at the board meeting next week. All right, at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to my esteemed colleague. Yvette, you have the floor for policy.
Thank you, Mr. Lansman. Francine Carley, Ms. Carley? Good evening.
Thanks for the opportunity to present the FY23 annual report. Looking back over the past year, OCHN has made some great strides implementing the three-year strategic plan, which started in FY23, and then also in strengthening OCHN's position as a PIHP to better meet the needs of people receiving services. At the end of FY22, when we started, we found ourselves faced with a new landscape, really coming out of the pandemic, and then also having fought off threats to the public system. So we used that energy to build on and expand OCHN's existing services, and particularly around integrated healthcare options and crisis services, and found ways to expand services for children. We also worked with more than a dozen community partners to develop a blueprint for addressing community violence, and just received a grant from the state of Michigan for about a million dollars to implement community violence intervention programs going forward in FY24 and FY25. So this presentation is kind of a high-level overview of all the great accomplishments that OCHN staff have achieved in FY23. This is a reminder of the five key strategic focus areas, so staffing retention, quality system of care, admin and service delivery, integrated healthcare partnerships, advocacy, and outreach. The number of people served in FY23 increased by nine percent over FY22, so currently, or at the end of FY23, the count was twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eleven people To highlight a few of our more significant successes, we have the Mental Health School Navigators connected more than 200 families to resources. OCHN's Youth and Family Care Connection diverted 1,185 youth from inpatient hospitalization. And then the coresponders made over 1,600 referrals, trained 147, the justice team trained 147 officers in the CIT training, and the team made 261 referrals for juvenile So with staffing and retention goals, OCHN is really committed to retaining and recruiting staff, and one of the highlights this year was that we received the recertification for, as a great place to work, and this certification is globally recognized, researched back, verifying a great employee experience. So OCHN's employees participated in a survey that measured five different areas, credibility, respect, fairness, pride, and camaraderie, and OCHN's overall rate was eighty-seven percent, which far exceeded the percentage needed to receive the certification. A few of the key objectives for FY23 under staffing and retention are shown here on the slide. Just to highlight a recent change, we, our CEO Dana Lassenby was recently appointed as an advisory member to the CMHA Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. So this is an exciting opportunity, and OCHN is participating more broadly in the program as well, and so this is going to be a good opportunity to expand the work that training, human resources, and so many other departments are already doing within the agency to build out what we're doing and connect that more broadly at the state level. So for the quality system of care goals in FY23, these goals covered crisis access, network, and quality goals, and there are two slides with quite a bit of detail. So there were quite a few accomplishments under this focus area, really covers a lot of ground, and so we also wanted to highlight, in addition to all of these great accomplishments, the MyStrengths application. And this is an ongoing initiative, something that started in 2015, it's as a new, at the time, behavioral health digital tracking platform. So participants, people who have uploaded the app, complete activities to improve behavioral health goals, it's kind of like a Fitbit, so it uses validated screening and assessment tools, and can show, measure your progress towards a behavioral health goal. So for example, there are, currently as of the end of November, 1,524 people enrolled in the app, and the dashboard shows that forty-two percent of people who are participating in the depression-related activities had a clinical improvement, and fifty-four percent clinically improved their anxiety symptoms. And so information about MyStrengths is included in the Stepping Stones newsletter, it's mailed quarterly to 14,000 people who receive services, and so in FY24, one of the goals is to reintroduce the program to compete with some of the other kind of behavioral health, goal-oriented applications that are more broadly advertised. And so as part of that, we would like to ask the board members to download the app at some point, and do that tonight if you can, and participate in the program. Next slide? Next slide, please. So for administration and service delivery, in FY23, the original goals were to evaluate the service models, increase value-based contracts, partner with other PIPs to identify administrative efficiencies, and then expand technological solutions to improve service delivery and administrative efficiency. So pivoting a bit from that, from the value-based models, OCHN has standardized rates, is working to standardize rates in SUD, the residential vocational services, and then moving to encounters and claim-based payments eventually. So with that pivot, it will bring a more efficient service delivery and reconciliation process. Another accomplishment in FY23, OCHN made some significant IT upgrades, and such as using cobblestone for contracts, and Business Central for the finance, and then also credentialing through Medversant. We've also made some adjustments for Odin to increase efficiency and better connect All right, and so for, next, the integrated healthcare goals focus on integrated medical and behavioral healthcare, and emphasize population health outcomes and social determinants of health. There are quite a few accomplishments here, I'll just go through a couple quickly. The team expanded the post-stabilization services and continued to serve a significant portion of the population through either or both the health homes and the CCBHCs, and we currently have over 1,000 people enrolled in the behavioral health homes, and over 200 in the opioid health homes, and at the end of FY23, more than 13,000 people were enrolled in CCBHCs. So the partnership advocacy and outreach goals really emphasize relationships with local elected officials and then other community leaders. So OCHN has built some strong relationships with the Board of Commissioners, and then also city council, local city councils, such as Southfield and Oak Park, and through the school mental health navigators, continue to build out the school programs in Southfield and Oxford in particular. So OCHN is very active in the community, very committed to building and maintaining that community connection. For example, leaders at OCHN attend approximately 14 community events a month, and we are continuing to build relationships with local and state legislators, and just as a note, our next legislative breakfast is scheduled for January 22nd, so that's coming up. At that point, I will pause for any questions, and.
Are there any questions? Ms. Newman?
Thank you. I want to go back to the integrated healthcare slide, and that top holds stabilization services. The bottom bullet, hired a peer recovery coach to implement Project Assert in hospital FQAC. Do you know what Project Assert is?
I can't speak to the details about Project Assert, but it's SUD-related.
Okay. If it's possible to get a little more information on that, I would appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions?
I'd like to go to the, let me try to do this, I'd like to go to the highlighting success, highlighting success slide, where it talks of the coresponders, made 1,622 referrals, 2,500 plus since 2021. The note I'd put is, how are we getting that information out? We talk about the success of it, and I really believe that the coresponders program is a success, and working on it, we've added, you know, a couple of more areas, but I'm not sure that everybody knows, okay? And what they do, how they are, and I- And what they do, how they are, and I'm sure there are appearances and what have you. I happened to be in a meeting a few weeks back where a co-responder was there, but eighty percent of people at the table didn't know what they were or what, okay? And so I'm wondering if you could look at, what is that process that we could put in place to get that word out? Because they are doing a great job. And maybe when we do the solidarity meeting, we can cover a little bit of that, but that's important, okay?
Yes, thank you.
And that may be an ask instead of an answer. And then on the Quality System of Care objective slide, it talks about crisis services, children's crises, and what have you. A few weeks back, Matt Kohart here talked about the resilience movie. And I'm just wondering, because of the impact of that, and we understand what's happening, the ACE piece, that maybe we need to share that movie. You know, I know that she brought it up. It is available, and it may help us in relation to understanding what the children are going through and what parents are going through. So maybe there's a way we could do that, schedule that, look at it, present it or something.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. I will.
Go ahead, Ms. Landsman.
Thank you, Pastor Jones, for bringing that to, what we already know is one of our areas that we also want to focus on this year. I sent an email out to my team during the holidays who's on social media a little bit and saw a few things that were being promoted. And I told them this year, we have to have a much louder voice in the community, not just to celebrate our accomplishments, but really to let people know what the services are that we provide or we support in the community. And I think that community education is definitely one of those strategic goals that we have to, you know, really get a lot louder about and what we do and how we do it and where those resources and services are available. Because I see other communities doing things, and I don't think we, you know, celebrate our programs as much as we should.
And that's key. You know, I've said before, I think the staff, everybody does a great job. I've mentioned that. But the other part of that is, we may know it, but do they know?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions?
If not, I do have one question. And it's related to the crisis services of the eleven hundred and eighty-five youth that were diverted. What percentage of those were already in treatment with a contract provider?
I don't have that information. If somebody from Crisis Services is on the line and can answer it, then I'll defer to them. But if not, I can look into that for you.
Okay, because I'm just curious as to whether or not people are not utilizing their contract provider the way in which they should and was taking face at the crisis center.
Go ahead, Ms. Flowers.
Hi, yeah. Excuse me, I'm apologizing for not being there in the room. I am ill today. But I will get you some more specifics about that population of folks that were served and if they were already connected with the system and so forth. And so I'll ask Sheila maybe to give us some time on the agenda to be able to speak to that. That's okay with you?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one other question related to the SUD home and the OHH. I'm just making an assumption that the numbers are different because one is just for opioid and is the other for a poly substance or?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do.
Ms. Massey.
Good evening, everyone. Merkia Massey, I'm the Director of Quality and Regulatory Compliance. I'm here to give you an update on compliance activity that occurred in the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty-three and a year in recap on the kind of issues that have been reported to us throughout the year. So much of what, several of the slides contain is background information that we've talked about previously. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but I can answer any questions that you may have related to that. The quarterly reporting periods tied to the timeframes that we have to report to the OIG, the Office of Inspector General. So the fourth quarter would reflect activity that occurred from July first through September thirtieth, 2023. This slide here just talks about the requirements that have to be in place for a compliance program. Hand it down to us from CMS and has been in place for several years. We can move to the next slide. I did want to point out again to the board as a reminder that we do have a reporting hotline forum that you can access through our website. It's open to anybody that may have a concern, an issue. There is no wrong door. Anybody can report any type of a concern there. If something is reported there, it is sent to our compliance committee, and it's investigated and followed up on. The next slide. This slide just provides a visual on how we need the required elements that need to be in a compliance program. We've talked about this previously, but just in a brief recap, we have to have a policy. We need to have a compliance committee, which we do. We need to issue appropriate corrective action plans as needed. We have to have annual staff training for our board and for our staff. Move to the next slide. I want to spend a little bit more time here. This is a recap of activities that were reported to us for the fiscal year. So in total, we had ninety-eight issues reported to us for the fiscal year. The categories in which the breakouts occurred, you can see those ranged from overpayment and proper billing, HIPAA privacy issues, HIPAA security issues, and then there's a category of other. The category breakouts for fiscal year twenty-three, the percentages of issues reported were very similar to what was reported in fiscal year twenty-two, being that the highest reporting categories were pertaining to HIPAA privacy and security and overpayment and improper billing. So overpayment and improper billing pertains to any type of a claim that was paid with Medicaid funds that was not appropriate. When we are informed of these types of issues, we conduct an investigation, determine where the wrongdoings were, identify what the root causes were, and of course, we issue corrective action plans to the providers. So I am going to stop here to see if there are any questions before I move on.
I have a question.
Pastor Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The number ninety-eight issues reported, I've got two questions dealing with that. Is that good, is that bad? And then the other part of that, of that, within that ninety-eight, I think my number was right, about half, thirty, one-third of it, one-third of it is HIPAA issues. And were those caused by us or that we were spreading something about a patient or person that we should not have been? You know, maybe a little detail on that?
Sure. In regards to HIPAA privacy, most often, well, first of all, we tell our staff there is no issue too small to report and there's no wrong door to report it. So in terms of it being good or bad, I think that the number is good. I want staff to report any type of an issue that they think is a concern. Most often, the HIPAA privacy issues pertain to misdirected emails. For example, an email may have been intended for one individual, but it was an error sent to another individual. That, and it contains PHI, so that's something that it's not appropriate. Or if an email was sent that contained PHI that was not encrypted, that's also a concern that we follow up with the staff upon. And what was your second question?
No, that's, the question was, what's the number, thirty-eight? Good, bad, whatever, in comparison? And you mentioned that you thought the number was good. And now you explained that to me, which really opens up another issue. If the email went to someone other than who was supposed to, does that also open us up? Does that also open us up to any legal type of action?
If an email is inadvertently sent to someone that should not have received it, it's considered a HIPAA breach. So we would have to follow the HIPAA breach protocol, notify the person served, explain to them exactly what was disclosed and the protections that would be afforded to them as a result of that. We also have to report all the HIPAA breaches, any HIPAA breach at the end of the year to CMS. CMS uses that information to determine if they need to look further into the practices of any organization. So we use any issues that are reported as an opportunity for education to staff.
Okay, and I asked that question because of so much identity theft and what have you, how that is transferred, that information getting out to someone that it shouldn't be, which then opens the door for some legal action. Thank you.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. I had two questions. One was on the HIPAA privacy. Were those actually breaches or were those disclosures where we inadvertently shared that with the wrong party versus someone breaking in?
They were not intrusions, I should say. So they were disclosures that were improper.
Okay. And the second question I have is, we had ninety-eight issues that were reported. How many of those were substantiated where, I know it was reported, but it turned out that there really was something to that issue that was reported?
All these had issues behind them that were substantiated, where we investigated and determined an appropriate action.
So we really did have thirty-eight where people reported they felt there was overpayment by, to a provider improperly, and it truly was?
Yes, we did. And just to give you a little more background in regards to that, most often, that is due to overlapping payments. Oftentimes, we have claims that have been submitted for payment where an individual may have been in another service setting, for example, in the hospital. But they are also residing in a residential setting. We, which I'm going to talk about in a later slide, we do retrospective reports that is termed data mining to be able to identify those types of issues so that we can follow up with the provider to let them know that this is a problem, you can't do that. The provider, when that happens, they are required to submit a corrective action plan. The claim is reversed and Medicaid is made whole.
Okay, so these were all things that we data mined? Wasn't that people said, oh, I think we overpaid this person? Or someone, it wasn't someone who was receiving services? I didn't get it, why did these folks get paid?
No, those were, we didn't have any of those issues. We did have, and we have had instances where a provider may have said, I made an error. I submit a bill and I shouldn't have because this person was not in my setting. And in those instances, that would also fall into that category. But the majority of those came from our data mining activities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Dr. Hans?
Okay, yeah, part of my question was same as what Jonathan asked. So you say, is there a pattern in these incidents, certain providers? Is there any disciplinary action? What, how does it work? Like if you have, I don't want to say repeat offenders, but yeah, it could be lack of training or lack of knowledge or not understanding how coding is, has to be accurate. And where is the line between fraud and actual honest error?
So we track instances of occurrences in regards to this. If a provider has had a repeated instance of this type of a situation, that would elevate the provider to the level of a type of provider sanction. Where we, in addition to the corrective action plan that we have them complete, we would meet with the provider to really talk with them to find out what's going on. This is the second time that you've had this type of an issue within the same year. So obviously, your corrective action plan did not work. So I do have to say that that's only happened a couple of times where we've had to speak to a provider at that level.
Any other questions?
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. So this slide specifically gets to issues that were reported in quarter four to the Office of Inspector General. So in quarter four, we had issues that fell into, she could go back to the previous slide, issues that fell into these three specific categories. So the first category pertained to tips and grievances, second, data mining and algorithms, and the third, audits. So in tips and grievances, those are situations where a provider, a person served, or any interested stakeholder would report an issue or a concern to us. In quarter four, we had an issue where a provider staff reported an issue to us of a concern regarding overlapping billing. And we also had an issue where a provider self-reported an error that they had made in billing. This was a provider that had not had this problem before. The provider was basically apologetic for this type of an issue happening. Nevertheless, we still go through the same process where they have to submit a corrective action plan. The claims are voided, and the corrective action plan is reviewed here to determine if it is really going to address the issue. In terms of data mining and algorithms, that pertains to post-payment reporting that is done to ensure that claims paid are valid. So examples of that would include any payments made after a person has expired. It would also include overlapping payments, an example I previously mentioned, if a person was in an inpatient setting, but also a claim came through for residential or partial hospitalization. So we run those reports monthly. And if we have any flags come up, those issues are addressed directly with the providers. Now, the third category pertains to audits. In this quarter, the referral source for these five instances came to us from the OIG where we had to, where we're required to conduct an investigation on the allegations that are outlined and the correspondence that they received. There is no filtering at the OIG level in regards to allegations that a person can make. We're just responsible for investigating to determine if there is any basis and fact regarding the allegation. In this quarter, none of the issues were substantiated that were reported. So, with the next slide, I wanna talk a little bit about some of the preventative controls that, um, we've implemented here at, uh, OCHN. We have, uh, controls in our EMR where a person, uh, clinician can only sign off on documents if they have the proper, uh, credentials. We have, um, time lap, overlap controls that, uh, requires that all services have a start and stop time and, uh, the same staff can't bill for the same service at the same time. Um, we also have some controls in regards to CP, uh, procedure codes that require two signatures. If a CPT code requires two signatures, then the service claim won't be, uh, processed without those two signatures. Um, we also conduct, uh, provider training on a, uh, need to do so when we see issues that I've come across where there's an opportunity to provide more education to, um, providers. And, um, uh, we also, um, audit to ensure that our, um, network staff are completing required compliance training annually. We can move to the next slide. Talk a little bit about some additional actions that have been, uh, taken in terms of compliance issues that have been reported to us. We wanna be, uh, proactive to try to make sure our staff are educated and, um, are aware of issues that may potentially need to be reported. As I mentioned, we don't ask the staff to filter out anything. They can report any type of an issue that they become aware of. We have a reporting mechanism on our internet, um, site that staff can report any kind of an issue and it's investigated and followed up on. Some of the other items here that you see in terms of action taken pertains to, um, training that's provided to, uh, staff. We've increased the volume of our retrospective, retrospective billing verification checks where, um, we have a vendor that we contract with that conducts, uh, claim verification audits to make sure that any claims that have been paid, that they were, um, authorized appropriately and that they're in, that were done by, uh, qualified, uh, staff and that it meets the definition of the Medicaid Provider Manual. We also issue explanation of benefit statements to a random sample of persons served quarterly just to make sure people served, um, receive a reminder as to the services that they, um, show that they've received. And if there are any issues or concerns that an individual has, once they receive that explanation of benefits, they can reach out to our customer services team and, uh, we would conduct an investigation. See, I am gonna stop again to see if there are any other, uh, questions from anyone.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. So, I saw this earlier that, uh, so we sent out EOBs, explanation of benefits, but we don't do it to all the persons served, all twenty-seven thousand?
No, we do it to, uh, a random sample of five percent of persons served in, uh, a month in the quarter, which is what we're required to do per our contract with the state.
Okay. Interesting. And from there, did we get any, um, feedback from them about, um, I guess this is where I was wondering about folks that, uh, that provided services when they didn't get services? Just trying to remember what you called those, um, improper billing.
Uh, we have not received any, uh, inquiries from people served in regards to EOBs yet. We keep doing it. Uh, we have to make people aware that, um, of this. We did talk about this at our Citizens Advisory Committee when we first rolled it out just to make sure that it was, um, user-friendly and understandable. And we did incorporate the feedback from the CAC into the, uh, process. But no, we have not received any inquiries from any individuals served yet.
I know those are challenging to make EOBs not complex, but it's important 'cause it does help us identify fraud, waste, or abuse that we wouldn't know any other way 'cause we'll see reported documents. We'll see they did all the right steps except when it gets down to the fact that they actually didn't see the person served. Uh, that's the only way to know that they've been misreporting. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome. Anyone else? Pastor Jones?
On the, um, and, and prevention controls slide, um, the provider education and penalties for repeated, uh, citations. And what is the process or standard, set of standards that you're looking at for providing the education? And are the level of penalties, I, I wrote in my notes, who sets the level and type of penalties? Is that something that's national, so everybody else knows? Or is it, or do we have our own set of standards, you know, for that? And even as we check out, uh, the process that we're gonna use for providing education to those persons who have, uh, and I don't wanna say abused the system, but I'll use that word in relation to, um, the HIPAA violations and other violations?
So, the, um, in terms of what the level is of triggering, uh, a higher, higher level response to a provider, if a provider has had an instance more than once, that's enough. We're gonna follow up with that provider, um, contact them, uh, call them into a meeting, uh, to explain what we've seen and that their corrective action plan that they submitted, uh, there is a problem somewhere if it happens again. Um, we haven't had to do that often with providers, but we set the criteria for that.
We being our organization.
Right, being, uh, OCHN. And that's been, um, productive. I mean, providers, you know, want to do the best thing and when we call them in, that's, um, something that you don't really want to see happen.
So, it, with that, um, if, if there's a, a charge for failure to perform, then do we, uh, which may help us, I know it's ninety-eight, I'll go back to the ninety-eight number, is there a reward and recognition for saying, wow, everything was perfect?
No.
Maybe it's a trip to White Castles or something, I don't know.
The expectation is that you bill appropriately, so no, there is no reward.
No reward, okay, all right. Okay. No trip to White Castles.
Ms. Newman?
Uh, Marquita, I wanna piggyback off of, uh, what Jonathan was talking about with the, uh, explanation of benefits. How long has it been since the CAC reviewed it?
It was about a year ago.
Okay, 'cause we do have new eyes on the, on the committee. You may wanna consider coming back to them to see if anything has changed.
Okay, yeah. Good idea. We will do that, definitely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hard to see down there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vicki Suter?
Good evening. Vicki Suter, Director of Rights and Advocacy. I'm going to do a brief overview of the rights annual report that was submitted to the state for fiscal year twenty-three. You were provided with the full report. Happy to take any questions on that if needed. All right, next slide. So, this just indicates how many allegations that we had, uh, complaints and allegations that we investigated in fiscal year twenty-three. So, of the alleg- complaints that we received, eighty-seven percent of those were investigated. You see a difference of the complaints received and the allegations of one hundred. What makes up that difference is the complaints we received, there was a no right involved or was out of our jurisdiction. So, that's how that number comes about. Of those that we investigated, thirty-six percent of those we substantiated. That is ti- a typical range within the thirty-ish percent range of, of what we see for substantiation. Next slide. So, then this slide just shows you the trend over the last five years of the com- uh, number of investigations and those that were substantiated. Uh, we're slightly below, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, not a significant amount. It's about five percent, uh, but we're with, you know, within about the average range of typically what we see for the number of complaints we investigate. Next slide. This is just a little comparison so you have a good understanding about what our substantiation rate is compared to the rest of the state CMHSP rights offices. Uh, they, the state does put out a report each year that indicates all of the, um, information of the rights investigation in our state. So, we're typically a little bit below, but not, um, really out of range. This indicates who the complaint comes from. Uh, I was happy to see in fiscal year twenty-three, we did have a little bit of an increase of persons served who filed complaints. And that's always a good thing, knowing that people have a right, their rights, and they take action with those. Uh, but otherwise, typically, um, we do see that majority are, uh, persons served, uh, ORR, staff. Uh, the recipient rights, the reason that we're seeing as the complaint source 'cause those are open up incident reports that we receive from our providers. So, we receive twenty thousand-ish incident reports a year. We review all those. If it looks like there's a possible rights violation, we open that up for investigation. Timeframes for completing our investigations? Well, we did a few that were below the thirty days, so that's kind of nice. Um, but, uh, um, we had about thirty percent that were sixty days or less in completing those investigations. As a reminder, we have ninety days to complete those investigations. We try to complete them as soon as possible because then we know that staff and individuals served wanna know what is the result of that investigation. Um, so about seventy percent of those, um, of our investigations were sixty-one to ninety days to take complete. I don't have a breakdown of which of them were, you know, in the sixties, which were in the seventies or in the eighties. That's just the range that they give us in our report. Unfortunately, we did have two cases that went overdue, uh, past the ninety-eight days, just, I think, about one day. Next slide. So, internally, we try to complete investigations within seventy-five days. And so, we do keep track to see what our, our team's, uh, rate is and, and thankfully, uh, we are much below that. We're at about sixty-eight percent or sixty-eight days to complete our investigations on average. OCHN has an appeals committee and they review the appeals that we receive. We received seven in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, the appeals committee upheld six of those and sent one back for investigation. Um, this is about typically what we get. We get somewhere between six and eight appeals per year. Uh, fiscal year twenty-two, you, two, we were a little high. We had fifteen. But that's because, um, one individual had, um, submitted about six or seven complaints. Each of those complaints that they did not get substantiated, they filed, uh, an appeal on. So, that's why we had, um, m- more in fiscal year twenty-two. But fiscal year twenty-three basically is right around what we typically see. Next slide. This slide talks about if we substantiated an allegation, then what is the course of action to correct that? And so, this, um, shows you the major ones that, that take place. And typically, it's employment termination, training, and written reprimand. Those are typically each year the highest ones that we receive. And a provider can do more than one item. So, this graph also reflects if they've done multiple actions. Next slide. Uh, this indicates that, you know, what types of persons that we serve, do we ha- uh, is the substantiated allegation in regards to? And again, it's very similar to past years. Uh, persons with a development disability, the HAB waiver, which is also people with an intellectual development disability, usually make up the, the majority of substantiated complaints. Um, adults with mental illnesses at twenty percent and kids at five percent. This is the type of providers that we substantiated against and who had to provide a remedial action. And again, this is very, very similar to past years. It's your residential settings, um, and, uh, support independent settings are the highest. The other is folks on self-determination or, or living in their own apartments. Next slide. And this is the training that we provide. Everyone entering, staff entering into our system have to attend training within thirty days. We also require that all staff throughout our system do an annual review. Um, and that is done online. So, this is the data for that. What I do wanna highlight on this is the persons served. So, we have three individuals who have lived experience that we contract with who provide basic training to individuals living in residential and licensed settings. And they do basics on recipient rights, dignity and respect and, uh, about their person-centered plan. Next slide. Three goals were established for fiscal year twenty-three. Off three of those goals, goals were accomplished. And this was reviewed by our RAC committee and they agreed these were accomplished. Next slide. Each year, when we submit our annual plan, we also have to submit goals for the upcoming year. And these were the, uh, goals submitted, uh, and determined by our, our RAC committee for this coming year. And then we also have to provide recommendations. And the RAC committee provided these three recommendations. I will just highlight number four. This is a new one. Um, this is just to, um, assist our board representative. There's really, if the RAC committee feels there's really something important that was discussed and they would like that board member representative bring it back to this board, uh, they will verbalize that. And there you have it. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
A under SIP, is that where your group homes would be?
Support indip- placement is not a, is not a licensed setting.
Okay.
But it's typically a place where a provider, um, sometimes has more than one apartment and they support all the individuals in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Lastly, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Landsman on his attire for tonight.
Thank you. Go blue.
Yes. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Landsman, that concludes policy.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next order of business is other business. And the first item there should be, uh, outreach programs. Suzanne?
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief 'cause it sounds like people have some places they wanna be this evening. Um, I did wanna mention, um, some events that we have come out very busy. Uh, start of the new year tomorrow, we have our law enforcement appreciation breakfast. Um, I know we're hearing about some weather coming in, but we're hopeful that it's gonna be just fine and we're gonna have a great event. Um, we are going to be honoring our CIT, um, so Crisis Intervention Team, our CIT responder and our CIT executive tomorrow. So, I hope that you can all join us. I also wanted to mention, uh, coming up next week, we have a number of events coming up with, um, the first one being the beginning of the week for the Greater Paniac Community Coalition, um, their MLK recognition event where Dana is gonna be recognized for, um, the Drumbeater Award. So, I believe that some of our board members are able to attend. So, if you are able to attend the event, we would love to have you there. Um, I believe there's a form that you can fill out. Just let us know by tomorrow. Um, also wanted to mention that we have, uh, this, we're, we're working with our provider, Meridian, and it's a documentary called, "We Can Be Heroes." We can, yeah, "We Can Be Heroes." Um, it's actually a wonderful documentary. We participated this last year and, um, we are gonna be do- hosting another viewing with Meridian. And there are actually gonna be two viewings, um, that day. It's gonna be out at, um, Oakland University. So, we're excited to have that. If you are interested in attending, that's on the sixteenth. And we can go ahead and put some information in on Boardable if you are able to attend. There're gonna be two viewings. Um, the second viewing is primarily for public. Um, but there, i- if you need to attend the first viewing, that's fine. So, we'll send that information to you so that you know, um, the information and can join us. Frances also just mentioned about the legislative breakfast that's coming up on the twenty-second. We hope you can also join us for that event. Um, and then we have the Kevin- And then we have the Kevin Song Conference that is rounding out the end of the month. And we have Dr. Posey was presenting at that event. Next slide. Okay, the point in time count, that is coming up at the end of the month. We actually have OCHN staff leading a team that is going out for the point in time count. And you'll hear more about the point in time count next week because that is part of our stories that inspire hope. Also wanted to mention a couple of things. I think I mentioned them last month, but we have our voting webinars that we're going to be kicking off, as well as our traveling art show. We actually received our first piece of art today. So, I'm really excited about the traveling art show. And then next month, we have our Call to Solidarity event. Looking forward to that, as well as OCHN is planning to host or launch our Threat Assessment Initiative. And we're planning to host an event for that on the 21st of February. And then I wanted to mention too, our press releases that we have coming up, Social Determinants of Health Month, and we're going to be putting a press release out about that. We'll be recognizing our law enforcement appreciation event that we're hosting tomorrow, as well as the Resource and Crisis Center is now 10 years old, and we are actually 60 years old. So, we're going to put a press release out about recognizing those accomplishments, as well as our legislative breakfast accomplishment and MLK observance. In regards to our redetermination efforts, obviously, we're continuing with the efforts that we are currently doing with the letters that we're receiving from the state, and we're sending reminder letters, our social media. Actually, our postcard mailing was successful. I've heard from a couple of people that they actually received the postcard. So, it's good to know that they received that information about redetermination, as well as some other updates we provide on the postcard. And we're continuing to try to do some collaboration with our tri-county partners, as well as we're hosting each month through May. We will be hosting again at the Resource and Crisis Center, an opportunity for individuals to come in and receive assistance with their redetermination efforts. And then I also wanted to mention that our due process team is actually working very closely with individuals that we serve as they are becoming eligible to assist them with their redetermination process to ensure that they are successfully enrolling in for that redetermination. And then I wanted to mention that we are hosting life skills. Actually, we're hosting them once a month. They are hosting some of their workshops and their programs here at OCHN. Couple of things I also wanted to kind of highlight that aren't listed on here, just to kind of recap with the co-responder program, just to give a little update of some of the things that we're doing to try to promote that program in the community is, you know, our coresponders are out there in the community promoting, I guess, themselves. So, they're in the communities that they serve. They attend a lot of different, like, trunk or treaty events or community events that may be going on. So, they, you know, they continue to promote that within the community. And then we try to continue to promote that with our press releases, as well as our social media. A lot of times, we're out presenting at city council meetings. The Board of Commissioners, the coresponders, were highlighted at that meeting a couple of months ago, and other community events. And so, as we expand the program, as you know, there is funding to expand the program, those types of promotions will continue to increase. So, just wanted to kind of highlight that. But I also want to mention our school mental health navigators. We did just receive a compliment for our school mental health navigators from one of our school community contacts that they just gave them high praises and how important they are to that school community, and just talking about the impact that they're having on the school community. So, I wanted to share that with the board. And that's all I have.
Yes, Malkaya.
I'm so confused. When OCHN turned 50, we had T-shirts. So, if they turn 50, if you're going to do T-shirts...
Diamonds.
Say what?
Diamonds. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, okay. What, you want a diamond on the T-shirt?
You're talking about the polo shirts, right?
That'll go for real big with the public, I'm sure. But I just want to put a plug in for the board. If we do T-shirts, then we'd like to. I'm speaking for everybody, but... It's a good, it's a good memento. I still have my 50th shirt.
That's wonderful.
Any other questions or kind of, Dr. Hahn?
Your traveling art show, what is the process of submitting art for that? I did look at the board website inviting work, but there is one name and phone number, but no response. So, is there any better way? Or people just bring their artwork and submit here?
Yeah, there is a form that does need to be filled out, but they can contact me, and they can submit their artwork. They can give me a call, and I can work it out to get them to submit their artwork here. We can pick it up as well. We'll make it as convenient as possible. Thank you. We want as many pieces of art as possible. You're welcome.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila, you have the floor for next item is the winter conference.
Click on this one. So, I've got, I just want to confirm who plans to attend because rooms are full, so I don't want you guys to sleep outside. So, Mr. Lansman, Ms. Woodruff, Ms. Newman. I've got a maybe for Pastor Jones, and a maybe for Mr. Young. Mr. Cowan, you're attending, or maybe?
I should be able to tell you in the next 48 hours if I can go.
All right. I'm going to send you a notice in 48 hours.
I will. I will.
And then, that's all I need. Because I just want to make sure we have rooms booked, and I, and I, I'll check on yours to make sure it's through. So, does everybody need to attend that, or just yourself?
You're talking about the pre-conference?
Yeah.
I don't know, but, I mean, we all need the night, we all need the night before the 5th anyhow. We need the two nights. This would drive in earlier in the day for that one.
Okay. I'll check on the reservation. Victoria made them.
All right, thank you.
And then I can scoot onto the board retreat if you don't...
Let's do that.
Okay. So, I, for everybody who responded, February 3rd looks good for everyone that responded. We got here and there for all the other dates. So, if anybody can't make February 3rd, can we please let, no, like, he's up? I did go ahead and check out, get quotes from two hotels, from room space and like a continental breakfast, maybe a lunch afterwards. So, I'll forward them to you, Mr. Cowan, or you. I checked in Auburn Hills, the Grand Plaza, because we've done a board retreat there before. And then the Weston Southfield, just because it's centrally located on M5. But those are the two quotes that even got back to me, so, okay.
So, the hype for the Weston one, it's part of the town center. It has covered parking.
Yes. It does have covered parking. So, I'll move forward with getting the location to Mr. Cowan, and he can make the decision, I guess, if the board agrees. So, February 3rd, I will put it on Boardable, but if we can mark your candle as a hold, that's the date. And then I just need to confirm, I'll get with you later, Mr. Cowan, on attendance.
Sheila, for the conference in Kalamazoo, are we to arrive that Sunday or that Monday?
Sunday. Right, no, Monday. Monday and leave Wednesday.
Great.
Yep. Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, Malkaya, Ms. Newman?
Yeah. Ms. Newman can't make the 3rd. I had conflicted dates with several board members on the other dates, so I don't know if we want to push it out even further.
Next up is our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the building that would like to make public comment? Not hearing any care. Is there anyone online?
If you're online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Okay, not seeing anything. We're going to close public comment. And at this time, it's board member comments, and I'll start to my left. Christina?
I think the presentations were really great tonight. Thank you, everyone, for preparing those. And I hope everyone's feeling well mentally, emotionally, physically after this holiday season. Hope you all got to enjoy it with friends and family. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
John?
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Malkaya?
Thank you for the reports tonight from all of the staff. I know a lot of hard work goes into preparing those. And thank you for answering the questions. I know sometimes they may sound tedious, but, you know, we just want to pull back the layer on the onion a little bit to get a better understanding. Thank you.
I'd like to again echo the words of my partner here, Cole Hart. Just excellent reports. Thank you all for the hard work that you have done. And as we kick off this new year, and to everybody, a happy new year and prosperity, your prosperity and good health. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hahn?
Yeah, thank you for the reports and also answering all the questions so clearly. Thank you for that. And I also wish everyone a Happy New Year and go Blue.
Last but not least, our secretary, Mr. Perman?
Yeah, I'd like to again thank staff for the, not only putting the reports together, but the comprehensive nature of the presentations themselves. They're very beneficial and really help us as board members understand all the hard work of this organization. And again, just wish everyone health and wellness for the new year, and hopefully, we have a positive outcome to celebrate tonight. Take care.
Thank you, and I hope so too. With no other agenda items, I call this meeting to adjourn.